...model we're looking to emulate.
Want to add anything to this?
Sure you do. Okay, at the end, all right. All right. Why are we offering Academy tracks? Academies, we believe, will allow us to greater utilize and combine our course offerings and introduce new ones, because there are some new course offerings, as you'll see in a moment, in ways that will simply provide greater opportunities to students. As opposed to the students just taking these classes one at a time, you know, maybe getting most of them, but not in any order or in any cohesive fashion. By putting it all together under an academy umbrella, that's how we can then get the postgraduate promises. I mean, a student can take any one of these classes. For instance, a student can take Welding 1 and Welding 2 and get a welding certificate. But by completing the Agricultural Academy, they will not only get the welding certificate, they'll get other certificates, they'll get other endorsements, and they may very well have a job offer, or at least a job interview, or a promise of admission to a postgraduate program. That's the advantage of the academy, and that's why we're offering the tracks. And again, we believe the academies will help involve our community with our students' education, making their education relevant to real-world demands, and particularly to employment opportunities in healthcare and in agriculture, which are jobs that our students can graduate from high school and have those jobs and still live in Rappahannock County. And one of the biggest complaints we hear all the time, you know, our graduating seniors, "Well, there's nothing for them to do here, they have to go somewhere else." These are jobs that are either within the county or within 30 minutes' drive, and you know, the jobs in the healthcare field, and there are a lot of them. Next slide. The academies that will be offered, we're offering two academies to begin with, and this will start next school year, 2020-2021. The Agricultural Academy, which has two tracks, a veterinary track and a farming education track, and the Health Sciences Academy, which has a workforce track, meaning that would be somebody who want to complete the academy and take the job offer, or an accelerated track, which could also result in the job offer, but could also result in furthering their education. Next slide, please. And now, I'm going to let some of our other people talk, because these, what we have up here, this slide and the next one, these are photos of our Agricultural Academy brochure, and then the Health Sciences brochure, and I would like for Michelle to speak a little bit, particularly, if you go to the next slide for a minute, one of the things where if you see that little icon in the lower right-hand corner that says FFA, it's something that many of us have scratched our heads and wondered why we've ever had that here. And I'm going to let Michelle speak to that.
Now, I have a tendency to really talk, so if I go over my three minutes, just be like, "You need to shut up." So I was in FFA from middle school all the way through high school. I held about every office you could hold in FFA. It was a huge part of my high school career per se, and it's what laid the blueprint for my career choices. As you all know, I've been a licensed vet tech for the last 20 years, that's all I've ever done is farming and agriculture. So with FFA, most people think of it as Future Farmers of America, but it's so much more than that. It's scholarships, it's experience, it's traveling, it's making long-lasting friendships with people off, you know, in high school and into college. I went to Virginia Tech because of FFA, because I went to governor's school for agriculture. So I think it's a huge opportunity for these students, and we did have an FFA here at one point, I believe, because my plan is to contact Andy Seibel to get our number back, our chapter number, so we can resurrect the FFA chapter. But a lot of it is fundraising, a lot of it is extracurricular. Now, FFA is a co-curricular program, so it goes along with the agriculture courses, but a lot of the activities are out of school time. So, for instance, some of the things I did, I did horse judging down at Virginia Tech, I went to Kentucky for the state FFA convention, I have run for a state FFA office, but unfortunately, some personal things, I couldn't do it. And it helps me get into my two-year reprogram at Virginia Tech. Because I, when I went through high school, I got college credit, because at that time, I think it's called dual enrollment, with, I don't remember exactly which college it was, but they gave me college credit for the Veterinary Science 2 course, which goes right along with FFA. So, does anybody have questions about FFA? Am I supposed to ask that?
Questions at the end. Dani, could you explain then the difference between the white and the yellow in the course listings?
Sure. The yellow is what is required for a student to complete the full academy. The white courses are naturally required for the diploma, it's off the high school diploma. So it's a combination of both required diploma, Virginia diploma requirements, and academy requirements, blended together.
And in some of those places, like if you look at the very ninth grade under semester one, it says English 9, 3 AP regular, doesn't mean they have to take two English classes, it's one or the other, in some cases, there'll be three choices.
And another thing with FFA is there's, I talk better just out loud, there is a, they have competitions, okay? So these kids can, like, work towards a goal, and then they go compete amongst others in the state, other schools. Like, for instance, I did parliamentary procedure, I did exuberant public speaking, I did horse judging, I did cattle judging, I could go on and on and on. But it was something that got me involved in my community, and I was now doing bad things. I was focused, and I was doing good, and I was helping the community, we were all getting together, and it was a lot of fun. And I went to Culpeper, so it was a pretty big community, but we were very tight-knit. I'm still alumni for our cover chapter, and they have meetings that I usually don't attend when I need to. I'm a little busy, so I haven't been attending them, but it's a great program. So I would love, I don't understand why Rappahannock doesn't have one, so now is the opportunity to get one, and go run with it.
And it should be noted, too, that when Dr. Grimsley came to us and said, "I want two academies for next year," these were data-driven decisions, based on the profile of graduate team, had collected data on students' interests and career inventories and so forth, and agriculture and health science were the top two that kept coming up. So it was a natural fit for our school population. And then when we were designing this, we designed it with, specifically with our students' interest in mind, and that's why we came up with these two tracks. The Education Farming Track was really, we mimicked Virginia Tech's associate degree in agriculture, so we looked at their degree to see, you know, where their focus was, and then we built upon that. And then the Veterinary Track was Michelle's expertise, and that's what she helped to enrich as well. Mr. Hogan was a big piece of the planning for the Farming Education Track as well, he's very, very excited to bring those skills to our school community as well.
And I did, like, a mock question today in my class of my sixth graders, and I said, "When you guys get to the high school, or maybe even before that, if you could take a class that was about animals and farming, and how, you know, what we can grow from the land, and being able, let's say, to be a nurse for animals, how many of you all would be interested in that?" Every one of them raised their hand. It was almost instantaneous. They love it.
I have a student today that struggles being at school every day. She finds it very hard to come to school and get out of bed and be here every day, all day. And we were, I was actually working on the Agricultural Academy, and I had the paper sitting on my desk, and I said, "Aren't you interested in animals?" And she said, "Yes." And I said, "Would you be interested in being a veterinarian assistant?" And her eyes lit up, and suddenly, she's like, "Oh, my gosh, that, you know, that is what's going to get her to school." And she's very, very excited, and she's like, "Is this for real? Is this for real?" So, and that was just today. So, you know, we're very excited to introduce this to the student population, I think it's going to be huge.
Will it start with people who are currently eighth graders, or?
It would be, all these yellow courses will be offered to eight to, well, nine of 12. Not everybody, seniors, of course, aren't, you know, might not be able to meet the academy requirements, but they certainly could get the certifications before they graduate, some certifications under their belt. But I don't foresee many, there might be one rising senior next year that could complete the Farming Education Track. But, you know, you never know. We try to squeeze it in as best as we can, but I think kids are going to be really excited about both of these academies, all four.
And another target audience, as far as the students, because of our block schedule, I mean, we have students that literally, by the time they're entering their senior year, they got enough credits to graduate. And this is the type of thing that keeps them motivated to want to come here. And to answer your question, like, for instance, it would be tough for a rising senior to perhaps complete this next year, but it also depends on what that rising senior has taken up until this point. It may be that if he or she is satisfied virtually all of their graduation requirements, they've got eight slots that they could pull in, so, you know, it's, that's a stretch, don't get me wrong, that's a stretch, but it's a possibility. All right. And if you don't mind, just go back one slide, Dr. Grimsley, just again, just to show you, on the left side of the brochure, it just, it goes over the things that I talked about earlier, about the course, the certifications that are available, the diploma seal, the one diploma seal, and then, again, two different tracks that are available. Now, if we could go ahead to, we'll talk about our other academy, and Ms. Robyn, I'm going to get you to come up here, because this is our Health Sciences Academy, which in some ways, we're kind of been doing, thanks to you all's efforts, but now it's going to be formalized, and I'm going to turn this over to Robyn Merton.
Hello. Okay, so, just to bring everybody up to speed quickly, RAPU, previously known, we started as a workforce training center, offering nurse aide and medication aide. Quickly, we grew, and grew out of our space, and moved to a new location last year. We had 41 students last year total, and we have 40 this semester. So, and a lot of that is thanks to RAPCE's board, which brings us up to the speed of why our name had to change. We worked effortlessly last year to become accredited through CHEV, which is the higher standards of education for Virginia, to become not only a workforce training center, but to be a post-secondary school. We achieved that in October, but with that, we are not allowed to have U, because it signifies that we could be a university here in Little Rappahannock, but we're not. So we had to change it to RAP Center for Education. And you guys may know or may not, for the past two years, you've had a nurse aide program here in the high school already. And at the beginning of this school year, through much discussion with Brittany Woman, who was the previous instructor, and working with Dr. Grimsley, about what would look, what would it look like if RAPCE took over the high school course? And so, at the beginning of this school year, we did, and instead of running it as a one-year course, we decided to run nurse aide as a one-semester course, and the students did fantastic. You had six students, and all six students passed the class and passed their state ward, first try. So that's very exciting. And your, the numbers have been the exact same with the students in previous classes with pass rates. So we started looking at this academy, and what that would look like. We are now offering Certified Philobotomy Tech, EKG Tech, Certified Clinical Medical Assistant, which is the third fastest-growing job in the U.S. right now. And all of those classes we can now offer through the NHA and through the accreditation with CHEV. So when we started putting this in the place, and Ms. Pond and I started looking at what this would look like, this is what we came up with. Now, it looks intense. However, out of the class from your fall semester of nurse aide students, three of those students have come to take CCMA with me, I'm actually offering it here in the high school classrooms, first block, and we are doing a CCMA class. I have two 11th graders, and then I have three seniors. Of those three seniors, they are actually going to graduate, because I went to them and said, "Hey, Friday, do they have a free block? Can I steal one Fridays, too?" And now I'm taking three of the seniors to the school on Fridays, and they are also getting their phlebotomy tech. So three of your seniors are actually going to graduate with three certificates, just like this academy. They are already certified nurse aides, they are going to have certified clinical medical assistant, which on average makes $20 an hour, and they're going to have certified phlebotomy tech. And I'm so proud of those three students, and they have kind of been our pilot program, can we make this work? But when we were looking at it, we realized that there are some students who took nurse aide with us for a semester that aren't at that level, because they're just not looking into going to a college track. They're more looking to, "Let me just get my nurse aide and medication aide, and I'm hirable, and I want to go work in a long-term care facility." These, the accelerated track, you're going to see, they can go straight into the workforce and have up to four certificates, and they will probably want to go to college, and may find that that's the job for them, and they can stay with just the certificates they have and make a livable wage, or they can go off to college. And all of these classes, we also looked at our prerequisites for our IN programs. So, we tried to set them up the best way we could with going through my healthcare career, and what that looked like, and now working in education, how we can make this a really successful academy for the students. So, and two of those three students are actually going to go on their first-ever oversee medical mission with me this summer to Africa. So I'm making sure they are well-equipped before I take them, so.
Yeah.
And it's been great, it's been, it's been really fantastic, and I think this is going to be great. RAPCE is well-aware, the board is aware of what we are looking at, and we've already started interviewing today, as a matter of fact, instructors to make this possible, and make sure that we have enough staff to teach our onsite location and to be able to offer it in the high school, so.
And two things that we didn't mention, we're hoping, these ladies and I are hoping, is to introduce to our eighth graders in the agricultural sciences, exploratory, and health science exploratory, to start to build and generate that interest and that understanding of these possibilities as young as eighth graders, really trying to kick it off the ground and get it going.
And I just want to reiterate something that Robyn said, and just, I hope we'll show you the level of thought that Dani and Robyn and Michelle have put into these course offerings. You know, just that one comment, just kind of an aside, that, "Oh, and by the way, these are also the prerequisites for an RN program." I mean, that's the kind of thought that these people have put into this program. It wasn't just throw some classes together that can earn some certificates, and, "Hey, maybe we'll get a job offer." They really put a lot of thought into this, and this is a pretty solid program, we're very excited about it, and I'm just, I'm impressed, I'm just happy to be a part of it. I mean, I got to give a lot of credit to these people standing to my right, because they really did a lot of the, digging into the details to make sure that, and we're still, it's still, it's probably going to look a little different than this by next fall, because, you know, we'll, we'll find some other things and tweak it and some additions, but we've been very pleased, I've been very pleased, and hopefully you all are as well. Questions?
If I could just add a couple of things that are important to note, as you were presenting, you know, it sounds amazing, and why didn't we do this before, and why wasn't it possible, right? Because it seems like that, not too difficult to put together, but we had some wonderful partnerships in the community, obviously, RAPCE's, what we've been working with, with our health sciences there, has just been a natural fit. But with the Ag Academy, it always blew my mind, previous life in career tech, why in the world, in Rappahannock, we don't have a thriving ag program? And before, under the stringent, the restrictions on, from the Department of Education on teacher endorsements and licensure, what you needed for some of those career and tech tracks, and grad requirements, it just wasn't feasible to hire for all of those pieces that you would need to make it work. Also, you know, having the additional endorsements, enabling you to go across those tracks is really rare to find, so having a full-time person able to encapsulate, that's difficult. The other thing is that now the Department of Education, on the shift toward the profile of a graduate, and the requirements now for the standard diploma and advanced diploma, you don't have to have so many verified credits, so many SOL classes, so many SOLs you'd have to pass. And that's what locked us in, like, for the career and tech, why we had a CNA here and a CNA at RAPCE, because students needed the sequential electives with the full-blown DOE endorsement, you know, track, so we had to have that. Now, they've loosened up on that and said, "You know what? The certification at the end is the same. If they have the credits and they have now the flexibility, why are we forcing them to take up those two years in their schedule block when they can do it in a semester?" You know, so it doesn't make much sense that way, and then give them that workforce. So those were important considerations to this. And the other piece is, you know, with absorbing it within in our partnerships, this, we're doing this without adding anything to the budget. So, doing all of this, because of the partnerships we have, grants, and the additional endorsements that our staff have been able to get, so.
Amazing.
We're thrilled.
So are the veterinary classes going to be taught in CAPS or at RAPCE, or are they these classes that we don't have?
Most of those can be taught here. So I can actually, there's just an array of different things, hands-on activities you do with the students, excuse me. Like, you have the CPR dolls for health finance, they have the same thing for animals, you know, if you can get the dolls. Somebody you can get donated, there's grant money, but all of that, there's, you know, by the time that they're done, Vet Science 2, they should be able to walk into a vet hospital and start working, is how I envision it. Because from somebody that's been on the hiring front, where I hire people, if I had an applicant that already knew how to, you know, properly restrain an animal safely, that's huge, and it's hard to teach a novice, somebody that knew medical, in terms of base and pharmacology, all of that's really important, I would hire them. In fact, Rose Hill's hiring right now for a vet assistant. If I had a senior that was ready to go, they'd have a job. And, you know, obviously, vet techs, once you get licensed, you have to do a 250-question board exam, okay? That's, and I kind of compare that when I'm talking to kids, as if you have a vet assistant, which would be like your nursing, and you have a licensed veterinary technician, which is like your RN for animals. So they have a place to go, once they get their certification for veterinary assistant.
Is Rose Hill partnering with this?
I can, I've already been working on that.
Right.
I've already been working on that, so I have.
Any way to help, to have people talk to them?
Oh, Michelle's been working with a lot in the community, soliciting interest from certain partners, so we haven't released all of that just yet, but we intend to do that, but we have many interested, you know, including farmers, vet technicians, and co-op opportunities, things like that, that we can build into this as it develops, but yes, we have some.
For a community standpoint, I know a lot of farmers in the area of big farms where they can go work cattle. Dr. Massey is still a very, very good friend of mine, he's my mentor, I mean, from a veterinarian standpoint, it's fine, the relationship is there, it's just, you know, getting through the run.
There's nothing standing in your way, as far as I can tell. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good work. That's going to be a high impact.
We're very excited. All right. The next item on the agenda is the Regional Special Education Memorandum of Understanding. This is that program that we have been talking to you about. That's still there. Sorry. Ms. Johnson, if you want to get up and say a few words about that, I know you've had a meeting or two about it, and we talked to you about that, too. And that's the additional funding that you had seen for our regional special placement for alternative education.
Hello. So Mrs. Meyer and I had the opportunity to go have our first meeting with the Regional Special Education Program in Faulkeer County at the beginning of February. At that meeting, we were able to elect a chairperson. Mrs. Meyer is our vice-chairperson for the regional program, and then Faulkeer County is going to be serving in the fiduciary role. The special education director of that county will be the program lead. So the main topic of discussion at our very first meeting was bringing in Rappahannock County. So basically, we redid this memorandum of understanding so that we could include Warren County, which was approved by the regional board in our first meeting, and we look forward to another meeting in the month of May. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, anyone? Thank you, Carol.
Okay. Our next item is the budget. So we do, we have put together the proposed budget, although, we'll tell you, Stacy and I were working quite into the late hours of the night last night, and continued through just about an hour before this board meeting, because numbers were continuously changing. We wanted it as accurate as possible, we still didn't make that happen, because I have a few numbers in here that I'll take note of, and that are a little bit different than what we put in the draft proposal, but the actual proposed, the draft-proposed budget is accurate to the best of our knowledge right now, but it'll probably be a little bit different by the end of the week, so, but we'll give you that. So, hand it over to our CFO, Stacy Witt, to go over the highlights with you of what we've done in this budget, and then I'll share some more, and then maybe read it.
Okay, so we had a base idea of what we wanted to do with the budget, as far as our staff numbers, our raises, that sort of thing. So we decided to do a staff plus a 3% increase for all staff members. Originally, we had told you, I believe, at the last meeting, that our insurance rates had stayed the same, and I got an email over spring break, and they had revised our rates, and now we had a decrease of 2.6%. I was very excited, I was sending a sheet of texts.
I'm the bird of this economy.
Yeah.
Go in the opposite direction.
Well, I was a little nervous when he sent me the email, but, yeah. So that actually helped us a little bit, too. Our VRS rate increase, not majorly, over the next two years, it's less than 1%, but it's still an increase we had to account for. You just heard that we're going to do the introduction of both academies, the Agriculture and the Health Science, and so we did include that in our budget. We had a reduction of the pupil service position at the school board office, and then we included a behavior interventionalist at the high school. As far as transportation goes, our car routes have changed a little over the years, so we were able to reduce two of our car routes. And we removed the new bus purchase for next year, just so we can make sure that we get our staff the rates they need. That, our goal is to make that only a one-year time, because we can't let our buses, our fleets, go.
And that came, too, at the recommendation of our transportation supervisor, who had consolidated one route, and was also able to, they've just done a really great job of keeping the fleet and everything, so they thought that one year would not be, you know, out of the question, so that's what we've done right now, with the understanding that that's what, you know, there may be some adjustments, depending on how the state revenues come out, but right now, that's.
We do not have a textbook adoption for this year, so we were able to reduce our textbook line by $30,000 from the governor's budget, which is what we were going off of. We had additional state funds of $56,348. We changed finance software this year, that's going to be a reduction of $15,000 for us. And then our E-rate funds have increased by $20,000. So the summary of what we're doing, you can see that the increase for our staff is going to cost us $238,649, that includes the VRS increase as well, that's all in there. The reductions are the bus purchase, which is $93,000, the textbooks, which is $30,000, our insurance reduction is saving us $49,813, and then our software. So our reductions are $187,813.
The balance of $50,000 or something.
Right, maybe $50,000. And then with, you know, the changes in the revenue side of things, we were able to realize additional revenue sources, grants and things, that will actually reduce our overall budget by around $44,000, and then also reduce the ASH to the county by 13, roughly 13. I'll go through that in more depth, but, yeah, so we're not asking for any increase, in fact, we're actually asking for a decrease, and doing more with it. Yes, and the challenge is real, but we have amazing people who continually ask that question, "How do we do more with less?" We know our enrollment's declining, we can't keep going back asking for more, however, we do have more of an at-risk population and more, that does cost us more money to educate, so keeping all of that in mind as well. So I'm just thrilled with our staff and the level of creativity they have, and the amount of community partnerships we've been able to forge to help us do this. So, this budget document, which will have just a couple of minor adjustments in it for right now, but I'll lead you through some of that, to go through where we ended up. And of course, your cute little, these are our kiddos, our dork. And of course, your cute little, these are our kiddos, aren't they adorable? A lot of this budget is about the littles, you heard a lot about the preschool and early education, that was the state focus this year, and it was ours for a lot of reasons too, so I have a lot to hear about that. Our report, as always, this is our third one, using kind of a similar format, different pictures and updates and things. So page three talks about our comprehensive plan and the goals, and everything in our budget aligns directly with our goals and our conceptual framework, okay? So our strategic goals have not changed, we're still running on that same comprehensive plan, and I put the lane in here too, so you can see the entire comprehensive plan as well. The conceptual framework for planning is the profile of a Virginia graduate, that's what we've been running on, and it is an exciting time in education, because it's time that the legislators finally listen to teachers, educators and legislators kind of got together and said, okay, this is what we need to graduate in our Virginia high schools, right? We need life-ready individuals, not just college-ready, because, oh my, we have a crisis in the workforce, we don't have enough blue-collar workers anymore, we don't have enough skilled tradesmen, what did we do? So they redefine the whole educational trajectory from K to 12, to encapsulate the profile of a Virginia graduate. So we're excited about that, because we think it's definitely the way to go, and it gives our kids such a wider breadth of opportunities, so we're very excited to be a part of that. All right, I'm going to go by my notes, so I don't just take you through this whole thing and make you dizzy. Our page seven is our performance highlights, so again, we are fully accredited for six years in a row now, we're very pleased with that, and I don't think people really understand what a difficult feat that is, the smaller you are, because every single child counts for so much more percentage-wise, and if they're in different subcategories, then it hits you multiple times. So we have a responsibility and obligation to be sure we know the academic growth rate of every single child that we have. So we are continuously progress monitoring, always checking in, and providing that one-on-one intervention that is necessary to bridge the gaps, and it's working, because we've been fully accredited with much more challenging demographics than we've had previously, so we're pretty excited about that. And I also put links in that, so you can see our full report card and all of that too. Let's talk about our enrollment summary quickly. All right, so preschool through grade 12, currently, right now, in our system, we have 805 students enrolled. We are projecting our budget on an ADM, average daily membership, of 780. Enrollment and ADM are not the same thing. The ADM is the average daily membership, or the average days in aggregate attendance that a student is enrolled in the school throughout the year and attending. So your chronic absenteeism rate and things like that play into it. Also, it does not include preschool, or outplaced, or any students in your CSA pipeline, your Child Services Act, or foster care. So you are still responsible for the education and the student records of those students, so there's still costs associated with that, but then they're pulled out of your ADM, so you don't receive any more state funding, so it's kind of a strange, that way. So this is how those numbers break out, as far as demographics go. LCI this year, that was another challenge we had to deal with, remember, we had the re-benchmarking, so LCI, the local composite index, went from a .76 to a .79, which is about as high as you can get, which means the locality is now responsible for about 80% of the overall operating budget of the school. And 20%, roughly 20%, comes from state and federal revenue sources and other grants and things, so that made us very nervous, because usually, when we see that kind of a re-benchmarking happen, and the LCI goes up, well, local obligation goes up, so does the cost, right? Local costs, so we were keeping that in mind, too.
80% is the minus.
It is. .8 is as high as you can get.
One tenth away.
Yes.
I think there's only, what, two systems that are 80?
There was, one time, I think there were six, but there's really only a few of us way up there now, yeah. Just a chart to illustrate, I've had this in my previous presentations too, but just to kind of show you our trends here with enrollment, with pre-K to 12, K to 12, and how that differs from ADM, and you can see the trend line in that graph on page nine, how that works, and how it affects funding. So again, enrollment is usually higher than what we see on ADM, ADM's not enrollment, that's just what you're being funded for, okay? All right. The next pages, I kind of go into overall revenue structures, and where we get our money from, how standards of quality and basic aid funding work. So I went through a lot of this last year, because there was a lot of confusion about that, and I think we clarified quite a bit on how that works. But your SOQ funding comes in on a per-pupil basis for certain levels of funding for positions that the state feels that you must have in a mandate, only a percentage of that, though. So even though you're funded for a certain number of positions, it never equals what you actually need to run the school, and in fact, it's usually much lower, and then you funnel it through our LCI, and it becomes even lower what you'd get funding for, so that's how that works. And these are the numbers that show in our current, which this will change a little bit again, too, with our new budget calculation tool, but this kind of shows you what we're funded for, what we actually have. We're trying to move a little bit closer toward, you know, SOQ mandates, meeting that, but you'll never be able to run a school based on just SOQ alone, especially with an LCI, .8 almost, so. Okay, and those numbers are there for you. The school budget, let's talk about what's new, exciting. We are doing quite a lot of creative things with this budget, making it work for what we think our kids need and our community needs. So grants, we do a lot of grant writing and trying to get all this, the money that we need to make our, you know, creative ideas work, because, you know, we want everything, but we don't want to pay for any of it. So we've been very successful in our grant-writing efforts, Commit to be Fit continues, Virginia Early Childhood Foundation, the Mixed Delivery Project, that was huge, and being able to offer preschool education to so many families that would have been unserved or underserved because of the reallocation of Head Start funding to other regions, so we're thrilled to have that. They look like, also, in both of the chamber and the conference budget, to have sustained to some degree, so, and we are, the more and more we've looked at the webinars and the new legislation and things, we're in great standing to keep receiving funding, so not guaranteed, there's still work to do, and make sure we get in all our reports and our, you know, letters of intent, and how we're going to expand our program, so that's looking really good. So I'm going right into preschool services, we've made great strides with our First Step Collaboration Project, we are so thrilled about the number of families we were able to serve through that. If you remember, we did receive the Virginia Early Childhood Foundation grant, which is the mixed delivery grant for $250,000, to be able to keep that project going, and look at gathering a lot of data, increasing the quality of early childhood education, and really developing offerings throughout the county. So it's not just about the school, but also our private providers, and bringing that quality and standard of quality up, working with Virginia quality. So if you remember in our last presentation, our last meeting, we were asking for a preschool set-aside of about $30,000 for what we thought we would have in a gap. One big reason for that was because we, our mixed delivery had a cap on the amount of carryover you could realize into the next fiscal year. We made the case and showed, you know, with the differing in slots, and also we lost our education coordinator person, Carol Lucking, who's with us, and we just weren't able to rehire for that position, to bring to the table what we needed, so we had some lapse in turnover money, you know, to be able to carry over, so, and rather than just spending it out, we said, look, we have a gap in funding, is there any way, what can we fill out, who do we talk to to lift the cap? And I'm thrilled to say they did lift the cap, so they're going to carry over that money, so now we're in much better standing for that. Additionally, we made the case through this collaboration that, wow, we really do have some areas that may not all meet the federal poverty guidelines that Head Start just finally recently updated, just this past January, but before, they were so far behind most of the other programs, like FAM, FAMIS and TANF and all of those, to adjust for, you know, cost of living and things, so that's why a lot of our population didn't really qualify for that programming. But anyway, so with the data we've been able to collect and show, that's why in our budget, we now have Virginia preschool initiative funding as well, because we showed, we made the case that that needs to return, we should be eligible, we have a lot of underserved families. So the Virginia preschool initiative funding that's coming into our budget is going to allow us to open up that second preschool class, and be able to absorb that from within and to, from moving some staff, so we're thrilled about that. Additionally, there's some more money available now through that as well, because the success rate that we're having, the new data is showing that one year of preschool isn't enough to really mitigate the gaps that we're seeing in some of the children that come to us, especially from at-risk families and those in poverty, or coming from trauma situations and things, so there's expansion grant money available now, and especially those who are already in the mixed delivery and preschool grant development phase have a kind of a better foot in the door to that funding. So we plan to not only apply for a mixed delivery expansion, preschool development expansion, BPI expansion for three-year-old pilot, and also additional money for public-private partnerships, working with providers to build on your preschool development grant program, so, yeah, we feel like we're going to be okay in doing that, if we can have that other class, and also get these other streams of funding, so as that opens up, I'm waiting for that application, it should be out by the end of the month, so we'll be applying for all of that.
And that all gets, that all rides on the First Step, like the MOU that we already have in place, and all rides?
Mm-hmm. Yes, it's very similar, there may be some differences as we work through the additional requirements of the grant, there may be additional pieces that we need. One of the things we were considering on the preschool development grant piece expansion was, you know, it might be a kind of a backdoor way of getting back in the Head Start, is if we were to do a regional preschool development initiative with our early childhood educators, we've already started that professional learning community, so basically setting up where you're collaborating with them, raising their quality, getting them to be able to accept subsidy, increasing the slots, but also being able to serve through grant funding their underserved population of Head Start students. So there's a lot of other counties around us who have waitlists for Head Start that can't get in, so what if we were able to pull those slots, so it looks like, you know, so that shows that we're serving, there's enough slots to go around, everybody needs a place, so that's something we're exploring, we don't know how that will pan out, but it might be a good argument to at least get early Head Start started, and then also maybe have a foot in the door with some Head Start expansion grant money we expect down the pipe. So that's very exciting. Any questions about preschool? So yes, the third set size-
That's something that's coming up, that's coming up in the new state budget?
Yes, it's just that that money is allocated in all of the budgets, so each house had, each chamber had a certain amount put to that, so did the governor, so we're waiting on the final number, but then that is in grants, and how BECF will allocate that out to the applicants, we'll have to make the case for what we need.
Yeah, especially if you're expanding the type of-
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, and we were able to serve 100% of our families, so we didn't turn anybody away, so then that's something that none of the other mixed delivery communities were able to do.
That's 100% of those that apply?
Well, what they say, with the data collected, their food pantry and other methods, they think it's 100% of the eligible, which would have been, yeah. Yeah, we did a lot of outreach as part of the-
That's better.
Right, right. So thrilled about that. The charts following are typical, you know, the percentage of the county budget that our school budget makes up. The whole budget is usually about half of the county budget, and then 34% is the local piece of that. Now this is where I need to make a little adjustment here, for a proposed difference in the budget, minus $13,000, the year before, this big number, yeah, we kind of did, that was the reduction of our debt service out of our budget, that's why that number's so big, but the proposed FY '21 is a reduction of $12,862, so I'm about 170 off, we had a little last-minute change in food service that knocked that number out, but the draft proposal has that accurate, so I apologize for that. Let's see, and then the following pages, 15 through, 15 through 19, kind of just go through the makeup of the budget, and how much of the percentage of the budget it is, and what that goes toward, and how much we put in those categories, so everybody can kind of see in the breakdown of the dollar bill, what percentage that, all of those pieces go to. Okay, so we use the same charts as we did last year, that had a positive response, so we'll keep that going. Let's see. New staff, I want to talk about that, and that's going to be-
This page 20 needs to have the same total needed change at the bottom of that, right?
Right, that's there, yes. All right, and then page 22, we talk about some exciting new staff. I say new, but they're not really additions to the budget, it's through attrition and redefining roles that we were able to do this, so it's absorbed into the budget, that includes our pre-K and a pre-K aid that we're able to absorb. Behavior interventionists, last year, of course, we added the master's-level social worker, clinical social worker, which has been hugely beneficial and has undoubtedly saved lives already, so we already know that. But to give you some quick snapshot data, our school social worker conducts about an average of 35 to 40 in school sessions with students, some of them from, you know, things that we need to do for, through discipline or special needs or at-risk, but a lot of that is the students self-selecting to go to her to talk to her about some of the issues they're experiencing. She also conducts about two to three suicide risk assessments a month, you know, which is good that we're intervening and assessing kids who have had any of those ideations or are at risk. Other students are telling us about their friends, you know, our friends helping friends, Alan Rasmussen, when he came and talked to our students and things, so I think it's very positive, it's sort of like, kind of ripping off the Band-Aid a little bit, because kids are, you know, holding on to things that are ready to share, but get better and build resiliency, and we're seeing that, too. But what has shown us-
Elementary and high-
Yes, elementary and high school. So the behavior interventionist is actually going to be district-wide as well. So we modeled this off of the Culpeper model, they've had this program in, I think, about three or four years now, and I know their superintendent over there, and I have really hit the state hard on their ratio, their mandated ratios for student, school counselors, that they wanted to mandate how many school counselors you have. Well, not every school is the same, not every school has what we have, and we have a LFCC career coach, and now we, through a grant, we have our Virginia College Advising Corps person full-time, we have these pieces, we have, you know, we have three guidance counselors, I don't need another school counselor, I need a licensed mental health professional in the school that can help with some of these things. So they were, the flexibility language did get in there, so they did not pass that, the change in the SOQ ratio, there's still discussion about it, but now they want to open it back up and say, okay, tell us what's more beneficial, so we need some flexibility in that. So luckily, we're able to do that. The other issue that we've been really running into is with our mandated in-school services, like therapeutic day treatment services, they're getting denied more and more by Medicaid, because a lot of the, they don't meet clinical necessity now under the expansion. Well, here, in Rapid Hana, we really don't have a lot of access to outpatient, we have kind of no access to outpatient services that they need to meet that clinical necessity, so we're seeing a lot of denials that way, which forced us to find a third-party contract, so now we have to contract out for a lot of those pieces, so we still have to pay for that. If we get too many cases, guess what, that's more than a position, so this can actually save us a lot of money down the road, and also, hopefully, a lot of it can be reimbursable as well, if we work through some of those pieces, so, if not through Medicaid, then definitely through some of our other federal programs, so we can be able to do that. Also on the horizon, I didn't put much about it in here, because we're so, you know, kind of in the beginning stages, but you've heard me mention before the idea of exploring the school-based wellness center idea. A couple of years ago, we went to the counties, saying, we have two mental health providers that want to provide some of the behavioral male supports that we need, but we have no space that meets the clinical right that they need, is there any way we can find the space? And it just, it was almost impossible, because there wasn't enough available space that could meet that. So we heard, I heard Mark Johnston in Shenandoah County speak about his school-based wellness center in Shenandoah, and how that works inside one of their elementary schools, and it has physical health, dental health, and mental health, all within the walls of the school. So right now, we're exploring that, we've had some conversations with stakeholder groups that are already meeting about the mental health issues and behavioral health, lack of access issues in the county, so- So we are exploring the possibility of putting the wellness center at our elementary school, kind of in the front wing where we have already our nurses clinic, we have the conference room and the school psychologist office, which would be a really nice front and center, kind of separate entrance, able to do very little as far as capital, but it would make a nice area. But what that can do, it can serve your families, your students. We also have the issue of chronic absenteeism, which is now our accreditation measure. So when I was, I was writing a planning grant through PATH for this, just to study the feasibility, what would it take, what legal agreements do we need, what's the medical billing, how many providers do I need to commit, all that fun stuff. Again, I want it all, but I don't want to pay for any of it. So looking at those pieces, but the issue was that we have a lot of folks that take their kids out for just regular appointments and things, but it adds up. And I'm like, I wonder how much it really adds up, you know, if we're talking chronic absenteeism. So I ran the numbers. As of February 1st, 1,365 log entries into our system for either leaving early, coming to school late, or missing school altogether for doctor's appointments, dentist appointments, no health things, which are all excusable. They should do those things, but they're traveling. And then if I have two other children, I've got to take them too because I can't get back for the bus, and then that's missed time. So that all adds up. That's your chronic absenteeism. It doesn't matter to the state if it's excused or unexcused.
Do you think the number of instructional hours?
Yes, and the instructional hours, that adds up. So 1,365 in a school our side, that's significant.
7,000 hour program.
Right. So it's definitely need for us for that, but also the access that we're seeing through our first step collaboration, through with our social worker, we see the need for providers' access because as you have more at-risk families, the likelihood that they're going to take off work for preventative care, quality integrated care is very small. So the alternative is they're saving all their sick days for when their children are really sick and the emergency situations, that's survival, right? So the preventative care kind of gets left by the wayside. So part of our Commit to Be Fit umbrella and our focus on health and wellness does include this piece in making sure our families are, and our children are healthy and feeling good and safe. So we're exploring it. I don't know where, how that's going to manifest. There's a lot of questions unanswered at this point. We're writing a grant to explore it even more, so we'll keep you updated on that. But it's something to consider if we provide a space that, hey, if we had a provider that came in and was able to offer a doctor to our senior population and open two nights a week or a night a month, I don't know, something more than we have now, or open a telepsych for some of that stuff and actually prescribe and do the diagnostics that we don't really have access to here, that would be pretty huge and significant, I think, for the community. But we'll keep looking and let you know.
Telepsych, is that, well, it sounds like a telephone.
Yeah. You actually, yes, we actually had a provider come to us and say, we can do that, we can have the capability to do that now, we just need the space and secure and confidential and able to do that. But yeah, you pretty much have a little screen and you're kind of a webcast with a psychologist or a psychiatrist that can diagnose you and actually prescribe and, or at least provide the supports that you need or counseling and different things. So there's a lot of options and possibilities to this. It doesn't have to be the full more, you know, wellness center idea, although that would be pretty amazing, but we'll see what manifests. We also need providers who are willing. It necessarily isn't the most lucrative for them, but I would love it to be where they can bill Medicaid and bill private insurance for all of those things. More on that as we find out, and also find out if we get funded for the planning grant.
Right.
The financial education coordinator position, you've heard a lot about this. New program started. Thank you to the help of Family Futures, Headwaters. The new program called My Future is the program designed to ensure that every Rapid Hannon County student graduates for that plan for the future, financial capacity and academic and personal skills to pursue that plan confidently and successfully. So the academy model again sort of fits into that whole profile of a graduate, what we're trying to do. But this program, we're just thrilled with the reception of that so far. We kicked it off in January. The financial education coordinator position is 100% grant-funded, so again, no addition to the county budget for that. And she's doing incredible things with the students, the families. There's already a lot of coaching going on with families and staff members about, I just, you know, don't know what to do with this, or I don't even have a clue about how to do a budget, or it doesn't even have to be financial, it's just, what do you want to do? You know, so it's just a really neat model. So the students are doing really well. Already, we have parents engaging with the program and doing things with their children to build the financial capacity. So we're thrilled that that program took off. The teacher leaders program with the additional endorsement incentives, we're also going to continue that through. That's been very successful in building the leadership capacity from within, and it also gives us a very versatile staff. And I was very surprised with how well this was received by staff. We had eight staff members already take advantage of additional coursework or take the tests and do what they needed to do to get additional endorsements. And that really helps us provide the offerings we need and give the staff really a lot of job security with the declining enrollment, quite honestly, right? And we offer the $500 bonus in that funding if you are able to achieve. We send it off to the state to get your additional endorsement.
Great way to get that flexibility.
Yes, it helps.
It's not a reason, no, it's cheap.
And that money is money we already had in the budget, and also some of that development work comes through our Title II grant for professional development, so it's not even a local lift really for some of that. Our agriculture teacher coordinator, we definitely need a person to be able to teach some of these classes and coordinate someone with the experience and the endorsement level, so we did have that. We got really very fortunate with a hire this year. This woman was incredible, Michelle Fincham's speak earlier, so we're able to, we have her in the budget already, and she's working with us. She actually is working on her K to six endorsement, education endorsement.
K eight.
K eight.
Yeah, and I took my math practice a third time yesterday and missed it by one question.
You don't need to tell people that much. We're with you. But that's for K eight. We don't need that for what she's going to be doing later. We're doing a.
I understand that.
She's so honest.
I'm so sad about it.
You've got this. But what she's going for is the career tech endorsement, so those endorsements are much better. They're called technical professional. So it allows us to have career switchers like Michelle who want to get into education and love it and who do an outstanding job. We were thrilled with her this year. But also be able to use their work experience and not have that go to naught either. So she's able to use that to actually, actually teach these horses. So we're thrilled about that.
Being taught by somebody who has on-the-ground professional experience is so valuable.
Yes.
They're the best professors I had in college.
Absolutely.
They were, came out of lunch with me straight in the day.
I'm kind of blue, farmer, because they had a single eye class when I was in college.
Well, there you go. Those things are important, but it is kind of rare. We have a lot of career switchers sometimes. You've never been around kids before, have you? So it's really rare to find, you know, people who have the actual, the talent and the art of teaching to go with the technical experience. So we're thrilled to have that. Salaries and benefits, again, we heard from Stacy, the 3% in step proposal, the conference budget put forth a 4% raise in the biennium. So our, your recommendation as a board to do the step in a 3 was probably very good because what happened last time, remember, they had a 3% going in for the biennium, and then all of a sudden they hit a caboose bill and boom, it went up to 5. And if you hadn't made headway, then you had to kind of scrounge for it. So this puts us in the standing where we'll have met the biennium if the conference budget is the one that's finally adopted, where we won't have to worry and scrounge so much when the, you know, kind of when it's a good, when you have all these pieces come together, the revenue and the insurance is low, VRS is low, that's your time to be able to do some of those compensation adjustments. We don't know what's going to happen next time, where we may not be able to do that without having a significant lift in Ashbrook County to make up the difference. So I think that was right on. There's still a lot more emphasis from the state level at getting those teacher salaries up in Virginia. So I don't, I don't think it's going to stay at that 4. I think there's going to be probably some emphasis to get it up more next year, but we'll, we'll see how that goes. But I feel a lot better going in, you know, knowing that we're on safe footing, at least safer for budget planning. If we had done just a step adjustment or a 2%, for instance, we may not have that for next year to be able to make up the difference, and would have to make some significant cuts to do so. Also, when we benchmark to the median again, we're still very low, especially at the lower part of our scale, which is going to be concerning because we have so many veteran staff that are nearing retirement age. So the zero to five area is what we're going to be looking at doing a lot of compression work next year. And that's going to be, our focus is not so much whole staff raises, especially if there's no SOQ mandate from the state, but also, you know, making the compression where we need, reevaluating our staff. There's been a lot more changes with, as far as where our range years are, so we'll be working on that, but we're still the lowest around us. We'll see what everybody else does. I saw that Culpeper just got hit with a 26% increase in insurance.
26%.
26%. So I know that's going to be really difficult to be able to handle even just the 4% in the biennium, so.
Didn't they propose a 12%?
I'm not sure. A lot of the superintendents I've talked to around us are averaging about a 5, you know, kind of working with a 5%, but a lot of that's unknown until they get actual revenue numbers and things, so. Yeah. And again, where we were out of 136 school divisions, we're, yeah, we're kind of mid-range, which, you know, we're probably, we're not going to beat everybody at our size and where we are and everything, but that's fine. We should be competitive, at least with the other rural districts around us in our region. And I think this, this increase will do that for us. All right. Our insurance rates, this was so great. We knew we had no, you know, no increase coming, which was awesome for the fourth year in a row, but for them to call us this weekend and tell us, oh, by the way, it's decreased 2.5%, 2.6%. Well, okay, let's go back and adjust these rates. So what we did with that was we kept the employee contribution the same, so the savings was realized by the employer contribution, okay? And the staff will, you know, will be ecstatic that not only are those staying the same, but they're also getting raises, so. Commit to Be Fit, we're still thrilled about that program. There's going to be sort of a revitalization of that coming this year, you know, now that we've got four years with no increase, you know, we want five so bad. So we're going to work on that and get everybody on board and get, got to get healthy.
Are we dodging those calendars two years? Are we dodging those calendars two years?
Oh, man, that'd be nice. So yeah, we'll continue to work on that. So far, in Commit to Be Fit funds, we've brought in $1.278 million over the past four years, just for grant funding. And then if you consider the, about a million or so in savings and health insurance increases, it's been an incredible program for our, for our county. And for our staff, we have healthy staff, obviously, because our pool is, you know, based on us, and that's something we have a lot of influence on. We can't control it necessarily, but we do have a lot of influence on the health and wellness of our staff. In fact, Stacy and I have another lunch meeting with an insurance consultant tomorrow to say, what are you guys doing? How is this working? Oh, my gosh. So that's awesome. Bus replacement schedule has been updated to reflect the change. Again, we're not putting in the replacement for this year's budget. If we have end-of-year funds, that may be kind of a first priority, but we don't, we won't know that until much later. But still, even if we're not able to get that, we think we'll be in decent shape. And facilities, finally, on page 29, your facilities updates. We got so much done. We're so thrilled that Mr. Curry at the county has been collaborating with us and did simple engineering brings and how he works the numbers and everything. So we were able to do so much with our facilities. Basically, this year, when you came back, we had a brand-new elementary school, for all intents and purposes, that's what it looked like, and it felt like, and the people felt good coming back to that. So we're thrilled with all of that. And also thanks to Rapflow with the updates in the courtyard. That's just been incredible, too. And every single time, even in the cooler weather that I go down there, there's people in the courtroom. We've never had that before. It's usually overgrown and people like, ooh, bugs, I don't want to go in there. But so it's been, it's been great. So that is the superintendent's proposed budget. You do have an opportunity to vote on this tonight, but we also have another work session later in the month, which might be wise to wait because we do have some other numbers that may come in that will change it. But this at the very least will be the, I guess, the baseline. Anything else will be actually more money. There's no other bills in the amendments or anything that would actually reduce the revenue.
It's good to know.
It's very good to know. So if anything, any other revenue, we're not going to change too much other than reducing the county ask probably a little bit further, but other than that. We were very hopeful that the school construction money would have gotten in there, but it didn't make it. They want us, they put out a commission to study that a little bit more. But I have a feeling that that's going to take off for the next year or definitely the next biennium, where that'll be direct aid to rural schools to be able to do a lot of these renovations that a lot of those localities struggle with.
It just seems like the most concerning part is just looking at this salary chart and thinking that surrounding counties aren't, are doing more than 3%. I just, I think, does that feel like?
Well, some of them are, some of them aren't because health insurance, again, is such a big lift for a lot of localities this year. So I think what they started out as, I think everybody was going to 2 to 3, and then some have pushed it up further if they're able to, just trying to get to that national average. I mean, at one point, the, the house budget was looking at a 4.5 one year and another 4 the next year, 8.5 over the biennium, which would have been huge, but they were putting a lot of the surplus dollars into additional compensation supplements to help divisions do that. But when your LCI is pointing, we're not getting much of that money. So I'd rather them not mandate it, but any chance we get to gain some headway on those surrounding districts is probably wise to do that because when they get those compensation dollars, they're going to put it right away and just quickly take off.
When these surrounding counties, when their health insurance goes up, they, they put that back onto the employee, which means the bottom line that they're bringing home is not as glorious as it looks on this spreadsheet.
Yes.
And we just, we do market that.
We do.
Carol told me, we market that when we are at recruiting, but the numbers, they don't reflect take-home.
No.
Which is a bad.
Right, because we're paying more generously into that. But the salary level is what gets them through the door first.
It does, it does.
Always.
But, I mean, if it's increasing at a rate, it's coming out of whatever this is reflected to them, so they have to know.
Right.
That this is a better, this is a better number.
It is.
If they spend any time, any math at all.
It's a little like math test, it's just that one question.
Right, right.
It's on paper, you know.
Right. They look at the salary.
It is something to market.
It's good, Carol's an architect.
I mean, it's even good to market it.
I mean, the alternative, the alternative is to, is to, is to give it and take it back.
Right.
To bump our number up. Because that's what, that's what every, every other county has basically, it's gone.
Yeah.
Right? Okay. As long as I'm not the only one wondering about that. Good. I don't want to change it, I'm just saying, we're being honest about it, we're actually probably doing better than we look.
Yeah.
Great, thanks for that. So we're in good shape, so we're not going to be asking the county for any additional funds this year, it's the bottom line.
Yes, definitely.
Given that comment, just where we're at in the agenda. If you would like to address the board this evening, this is a public hearing, and it's your opportunity to come and speak to the board about the budget in particular. If you want to speak about something else, there's another opportunity later on in the, in the agenda. So you might like to address the board this evening? Would you like to see an increase?
You got one in the newspaper.
We can find something to buy.
Chuck, you don't want to get up?
I do.
Come on, looks like.
I'm just going to do it from here.
Looks like, I would speak loudly because we got, we got video rolling.
I want to commend you all on the Ag Academy as a former Ag teacher and FFA advisor. Many, many, many years ago, I think this is a fantastic thing, especially for Rapid Hannon County. The wealth of information that the kids can get, especially in the co-curricular part of it, of the contest. My youngest son belonged to the Signal Knob FFA chapter in Strasburg in the eighth grade. We homeschooled up until the seventh. He went to Signal Knob. We homeschooled up until the seventh, he went to Signal Knob in the eighth. He joined the class and it was a leadership class. He participated in soils judgment, which was what my background was. And his team represented Virginia in the National Soil Judgment Contest in Oklahoma City that year. And the whole team went out there. Uh, he also participated in the computer science program and participated as the only eighth grader in the contest in Virginia that year at Tech during the, during the state convention and he won the state contest. At that point, he figured he's done everything he could in the F F A and he no longer was in F F A. But he used that computer science background to go to Roanoke College on a full ride in computer science. And today, three jobs after he graduated in 2013, he's now working in D C for National Public Radio as a professional white hat hacker. So I am very proud of him and if I've credited to the F F A program in Shenandoah County. So I think this would be a fantastic thing for the kids, especially since you've got most people already on staff and it's not gonna cost any extra, extra money, so to speak. So, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I'm gonna clear the hearing closed. There'll be another chance to speak on the budget. There's a joint meeting of the school board and board supervisors related to the budget April 20th, something, 20? April 20th. Uh, we'll get the exact date out to you, it's a, it's a month and a half away and there'll be another chance to speak, uh, with the board. All right, moving on, uh, headwaters representative?
I do have a report. Um, let's see, the first, I, I met with, I met separately with the headwaters, um, executive director and, um, the chair of the board last week. They gave me a copy of a, um, resolution that Gary Achill, the headwaters board chair, sent to state legislators on behalf of headwaters, asking for support of rural schools needs modeled on the joint resolution that was at our joint meeting and headwaters sent that as well. It was a good letter, um, with even more details filled in, so that was, he did what he said it was going to do from the public comment. Headwaters also has welcomed a few new board members. Our CPS parents, Donna Comer and Bruce Lott, who are both starting to serve on the board. And Tanya Paul and Keith Dutil are also joining the board of directors, have just joined this month. So four additional, he said, um, they said that they could even use another one or two additional. So that, that, that search for additional members is, is on. And, um, headwaters after school programs are underway. Um, headwaters is also now providing snacks for 60 after school remediation students, um, as well as their regular clubs. And they're serving 20 additional students, um, with this three day a week program.
Thanks. Any questions? Any B G S?
We'll be happy, but we'll meet again eventually.
All right, moving on, the discussion of the budget. Is there any board discussion of the budget as presented this evening? Other comments or questions?
Thanks for listening through.
I just wanna commend both of them. It's fabulous. It tells what needs to be told so that people can understand it. And it follows the, the, the plan that we put out over the course of the, right, four years we've been doing it.
We used to, we used to just hand this out.
And say, here it is. Yeah, hold on.
Yeah, go figure it out. And so I, I think maybe we don't appreciate how good we got it, uh, with this type of communication. So appreciate the work.
And I would assume that paper copy is available in the, at the library and here?
It will be, yes. We're going to disseminate those. I wanted to make these several adjustments and, um, we'll, we'll get them all printed and distributed around the county as well, yes.
And we'll put that on the website.
It's up and it's on board docs now.
Will it be distributed widely after the, the board has approved this?
Yeah, it'll still be out, yeah.
So can you, so there's a, so there's a stack that people picked up tonight?
Mm-hmm.
And that's like version zero. So can you put a version number on these things so that when we're shipping them out, people will know they got the latest thing?
Well, typically this is the one that will, um, kind of outline how we got to where we, we've gotten. And then as we go through our next work session, I'll have another presentation that will outline any changes to that. Um, but with this one, yeah, we'll put out a, another version with the $170 adjustment in the reserves and we'll see what the general assembly does later. But like I said, it's not gonna be, it doesn't look like anything major is gonna change. It's just gonna be a few numbers that we may have to, um, increase in the revenue in certain lines that will, we can take care of at the work session, then you can adopt. So to send to the county.
Yeah, I may also say like that, yeah, I've worked in a big system, I've worked in a, I mean, a little system. And the amount of work is the same, the numbers are different, but the amount of work is the same. So you've got one person doing the same amount of work that a lot of people do with other big, big systems, that's to be commended.
All right, moving on to budget calendar, uh, we do have a scheduled session on March 17. March 17.
It's Wednesday.
Next.
Tuesday.
It's next Tuesday. It's next Tuesday. So are numbers gonna change between now and next Tuesday?
Yeah, Thursday, they could
Thursday.
run on and give us our new budget calculus, so yes, it could.
So, but if we could next Thursday adjust based on that, we're gonna vote on the bottom line and get our numbers over to the, to the supervisor.
Well, once they vote, I'm not sure how, how long after they vote that the calculus for the school is bundling through.
I'll be, so we may not have some numbers. So should we be meeting this soon or can we wait a week or?
Wait.
We wait.
Sure.
I mean, but there's no sense meeting.
You got something going on, say Patrick's dead, I think.
Well, there's no sense us just getting together, there's things that are still going.
Which date would it?
Which date would you prefer?
Maybe the 24th? A week later, or it's gonna settle down by that?
It should.
Boy, you never, you know, you don't know.
The governor could say, I don't like any of it, try again.
It's more likely to be settled.
I think it will. I think with this, um, the, the legislators that are in office currently, I don't see there's gonna be much bickering back and forth, but, you know.
You don't know.
It's not a guarantee.
All right, well, let's at least move it to the 24th.
Um, same time.
Same time?
Six thirty.
Moving it to the 24th.
Twenty-four.
At the, at the school board office conference, but it's, it's open to anyone that wants to come. Six thirty.
Six thirty. I gotta change my calendar.
And the, the school board has been invited to the board supervisor's public hearing, uh, which is April 20th at seven o'clock at the elementary school.
That's what it says.
That's what it says, that's what's gonna happen.
That's what I had written.
And we will, um, need a motion to, uh, later to modify that to include, um, meeting on that date to make it a joint meeting. So we have to have a formal vote at this meeting to do that.
Did we, did we put that down?
Yes, it's under action, I believe.
Yeah.
Right.
So you'll just need a specific motion to say those two things.
It has to be at the elementary school.
Elementary.
I think it's at seven. Seven.
Yep.
All right, the V S P A honor roll, uh, I didn't pull that document out of there. We should let people know what we're doing there. Is there a representative from, from, uh, the bank of, 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 you know?
No, it'll be next week. I mean, um, our next board meeting.
Okay, they'll come in the next week?
Yeah, they're not being presented with it at this meeting. This is where you vote to set it off.
Basically the idea is we, we, because of the, my future organization this year, uh, and overview was such a critical part of that, uh, as far as managing it, uh, the board decided to unanimously, unanimously give this V S B honor roll to them and that's what we're voting on tonight. All right, uh, is there any public comment tonight related to anything else that public would like to address the board on anybody? Yes, ma'am?
I'm not exactly sure if this is appropriate or not, given what you just said, maybe next board meeting is appropriate. But I do want to say a little bit more about the resolution for the school board recognition for O C U. Um, they really
Can you come down?
It'll be up.
I thought I had a really loud voice.
Well, the mic, it'd be better if the mic takes you.
Actually take the mic to you.
Um, I did want to emphasize that O C U really bent over backwards and basically created an entire new accounting system to handle all these individual kids' accounts. So we will actually, and, and gave us a very good interest rate on those accounts, much better than any of us are getting on our personal savings accounts. We want one ourselves. Um, but I, so I, I did want to emphasize that they really did do a huge amount of work and were very creative and very cooperative, uh, in that respect. And we're supporting the, the whole, um, growth of the personal and financial skills in a lot of different ways. So this is, uh, more than deserved. They're really making their mark on the community, so we really appreciate it.
Appreciate you speaking up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else this evening? All right, um, we have action items, we're gonna be rolling through, uh, is there a motion to approve the regional special education memorandum of understanding as it was presented this evening? We have a motion.
I'm a
We have a motion from Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Rubin, is there any discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, no. And so order, um, we are not gonna be adopting the budget this evening. Modification of the budget calendar, the modification includes the, uh, the change for the joint meeting and the work session. Those two changes we already discussed. The work session is the 24th, the joint meeting, the 20th of April. Or is there a motion to modify a budget calendar?
So
We have a motion, Mr. Rubin, is there a second? Second from Mr. Grove, any discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, no. And so order, is there a motion to approve the V S B, V S B A business honor roll?
Same.
Do you have a motion from Ms. Vine, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Rubin, any discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, no. And so order, is there any new business? I have something. This is exciting. Are you ready? I got a phone call today. I got a phone call from Dr. Jack, uh, the superintendent of Buckland County Schools. And Shannon is blushing.
Stop it.
We have a letter that we've received. So it, when it comes to schools in the state of Virginia, it's broken down into eight regions, uh, we are region four, right? And I can't remember how many schools, districts are in four, I think it's like 20, all right, 19 or 20. And it's called the Northern Virginia District is the one that we're in. And, uh, Shannon Grimsley, Dr. Shannon Grimsley has been selected as the 2020 Region Four Superintendent of the Year. All right, now you need to know you need to know, uh, that these other districts, they have a single school that has more students than our whole district.
Yeah.
Right? And you also need to know that I told, I told Dr. Jack I was not too happy about this because I didn't want, I didn't want this to get out.
I know.
I didn't want, I didn't want people to know, uh, what we got going on here, right? So it was a great, it's a great honor, uh, and, and well deserved and to a very creative mind, uh, that we have here in Repahan County. So we're very fortunate and, uh, anyway, this is really cool. I've got this letter here and hopefully somehow or another we can embarrass her publicly with some help from the press. Can we do that? Yes, we can. All right.
Yeah, that also puts her in the running for the state superintendent of the year, which is another
Well, that would, that would rock. Hopefully that comes with money. Does it come with money?
I, no, I think it comes with prestige.
Paperwork.
More paperwork.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, the next regularly scheduled school board meeting would end up being?
Seventeenth.
The 24th, right?
No, I mean, the regular, the regular meeting, right? It's April 14th, April 14th.
April 14th, okay.
All right, uh, at six thirty back here in the van, I would assume we're back to our normal location.
Yes.
All right, is there a motion to go into closed session?
I do the board convenions a closed session for the following purpose, to discuss and consider the appointment of staff members, classified and post positions, discussion of superintendent's goal pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 and discussion of